Hey Kim, do I have to leave to come back in?
Yes, why?
My video is not working. I've been disabled.
Okay, can you help out now?
Uh, hold on. Yeah, now I'm okay. All right, I'm okay now.
Yeah, I just hit the button.
All right, I think you gotta let everybody in.
I'm in, I'm in.
Same for me, I can't turn on my video.
Where are you? Wait, uh, damn it.
You can help me out too, Kim.
I can hear you, oh. Where's everybody's video?
I think you can see me, right, Kim?
Yeah, I can see you. Okay, uh, okay, uh, okay.
There we go. You still working on anybody else, Kim?
I'm looking. Okay. It holds on twice. Is everybody here?
Kim, I'm still out there.
You, okay, you, okay, I swear, okay, wait.
I'm on twice because I'm having some problems with my laptop, so I'm on for, um, for sound on my, and then I'm on for video just to see if.
Right, I say, I see two of them, okay.
Yep.
I was gonna ask about that.
All right, the time is now 7:30 PM. Uh, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Township of Old Bridge zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for December 3rd, 2020. I'm James Sullivan as chairman of the board. I would ask you now to join me in reciting Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of Our Country. My pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States, America. And to the republic.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. At least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting. Also by mailing such announcements to the home news and Tribune, also by filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the announcement on the township website. Ms. Silverman, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Duhurst?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
He may not have his sound on, I saw him on.
Yeah.
Here.
Okay. Ms. Kilduff?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Skodna?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Sakowski?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Sax?
Here.
Mrs. Shapiro?
Here.
Ms. Sawat?
Yeah.
Mr. Hart? Ms. Drum?
Here.
And myself, Kim Silverman.
Thank you, Kim. Welcome every Old Board members and the professionals here this evening. Thank you for being present. This meeting is being conducted electronically via the internet by webinar. Uh, it is unique and it takes patience on all involved as we no longer gather around in a courtroom to do this business. But we're doing so from our own homes or our own offices. This meeting is also being televised by OBTV Channel 15 as well as live feed on YouTube. I remind those of you watching us tonight either on TV or on YouTube that there's up to a thirty-second delay in communication. Uh, this will be important to remember if you wish to personally join the public portion later on. Anyone calling in must lower their TV or device that you're watching us on and listening to us, or you will be confused by the time delay. Just keep that in mind. I would ask all participants to silence their phones at this time in order to avoid any disturbances during testimony. As always, this meeting will follow state protocols instituted by the Zoning Board of Adjustment. There's some general housekeeping items that will start the meeting tonight and followed by two applications this evening. Uh, one, a very short one involving homeowner, and a second one involving a commercial business. Uh, I don't anticipate there to be a recess in between the two. I'm fairly certain that the court stenographer will be prepared as she's not involved in the first matter. The, the, uh, protocol of the board is that when someone testifies, we listen to the witness. And then the board members, if they have questions, would ask, the professionals certainly would have questions and ask. And we reserve the public portion until all the testimony has been taken on the matter. And then we'll open up a public portion, uh, at which time you can phone in and comment on the matter, whether you be for or against, or you may have some questions of something that you heard. Because it happens at the end, I recommend to people, get a piece of paper now and a pen or a pencil and take some notes. Uh, if you have interest, uh, it's worthwhile for you to call in. We, we welcome the participation. During the meeting, you'll see something flashing up, uh, on the screen, and it's going to have some phone numbers on there. That's the way you call in. This meeting is being monitored by the Township Planner Venus Sawat, uh, and she's going to also add some commentary and advise, advice to those of you at home and the board members. Ms. Sawat?
Good evening, all. Um, just a few reminders before the meeting begins. Zoning Board members will be unmuted during the first half of the meeting when they will be required to vote on other agenda items. The zoning board attorney, the zoning board chairman, and the zoning board secretary and court reporter will remain unmuted throughout the meeting. Everyone else will be muted once the presentation for the applications begin. The applicant's professionals will be asked to turn on their video and unmute themselves in the order in which they will testify. For public, I will announce the last four digits of the caller's phone number to come forward, announce their name and addresses. I will also announce the last four digits of the next caller's phone number so that they will be prepared. We will share our screen to display any exhibits. The meeting information will be displayed on the screen multiple times during the meeting so that any resident who wishes to call and join the meeting can do so. Uh, please be patient, you, each one of you will be heard and you will have an opportunity to speak. Please be mindful, um, that there is a thirty-second time lag in the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sawat. Board members, I'm gonna follow the agenda as written this evening. Uh, item number two is minutes, and that's in reference to November 6th, 2020. Hopefully, everyone has a head, a chance to read them. Uh, they did come in the agenda packets, uh, that were sent on the surfaces. Uh, I would ask if someone absent, uh, commentary on them for additions or deletions, I'd ask them, somebody to adopt them for memorialization.
I'll move him, Duhurst.
I'll second it.
Stoner? Okay, uh, I think Skodna beat you in there, Ben, on that one. Uh, we'll get to the next time. Mr. Duhurst was the motion and seconded by Mr. Skodna. Roll call, please, Ms. Silverman.
Mr. Duhurst?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skodna?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. I remember three's continuances. We have, uh, two of them this evening. Now, the first one is thirty-six, there's nineteen Z, Jersey Thirty-four Associates. They're located in the R twenty zone at five nine three Jersey State Highway Thirty-four. They're seeking a preliminary and final major site plan with C and D variances. Uh, that's going, they're gonna construct or seeking to construct a second building on the property holding three basketball courts and I guess a locker room and bathrooms, uh, along with expansion of, of parking. Uh, that applicant is being represented by the Hollywood Paper Firm, and as such, the applicant is asking the matter to be continued March fourth, twenty twenty-one with further notice. If you're watching on that matter this evening, in essence, it's not going to be heard, uh, tonight, but it will be back on the schedule for March fourth, twenty twenty-one. There will be further notice. The, uh, second, uh, continuance is, uh, four dash twenty twenty Z. That's sixty-nine Ravine Avenue LLC. It's in the, uh, R five zone. Uh, that's at sixty-nine Ravine Avenue, block thirty-seven lot, uh, sixty-nine point one one. That's for in addition to a single-family home seeking C and D variances. Uh, Bill Bujure Esquire representing the applicant, the applicant in this matter is being asked, uh, asking that this be continued through the March fourth, twenty twenty-one agenda with further notices. That brings us to our first application this evening, and I'll remind you, before, before I call this in, we've already heard the testimony on this, uh, on this application. What we didn't have is a certification of mailings, and I guess either Mr. Sax will, uh, will ask that kind of question or Ms. Silverman. This is matter seventy-seven, there's twenty twenty Z. It's, uh, Kathleen Salverson. It's in the TCD R sixteen. Location is seven White Wood Place. Uh, this is for seventeen by twenty-two addition. Again, well, we're not gonna have a testimony tonight, but we're going to have to, uh, vote on the matter. Mr. Sax, could you help me out on that one? Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that, uh, at the last hearing, uh, we requested that, uh, Ms. Salverson, um, uh, perform a, uh, another notice according to the Municipal Land Use Law. Uh, that would have required certified mailings. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, that was taken care of. Uh, so, uh, I think Ms. Silverman can confirm that, uh, as well.
Yes.
But if that, yeah, so if that's the case, then, uh, obviously, you heard the testimony on this application. Um, all we're gonna be doing is voting on this. Mr. Chairman, if you want, maybe just open it up to the public again and see if there's any, uh, further comment from the public. I don't think there was last time. Uh, and essentially what, uh, Ms. Salverson is seeking to do is to, uh, is to put a, uh, an addition on to her house. Um, and we can take a vote on it. Yeah, I think what the matters there was, it was a total overall setback issue and a side yard setback, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, yeah, it was a violation of side yard setback, uh, and combined.
And total side yard.
Total. All right, you know what? Uh, before I go to the public and open it up, I'm gonna ask any board member if you have any questions on it. Hopefully, is everyone's familiar with it or still has the matter in front of them? Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Ow!
I don't know what that is either. Okay, uh, any board member from, uh, Mr. Skodna?
No, sir, not at this time.
Ms. Kilduff? No, Mr. Connor? No question. Mister, uh, I'm looking at my notes. Mr. Duhurst?
No.
Uh, Vice Chairman Walker?
None.
Uh, Mr. Stoner?
None.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Sakowski?
None, thank you.
Okay, the board has no further questions. I'm gonna, one final time, I'm gonna open this up to the public once again. It's seventy-seven, there's twenty twenty Z. The address is seven White Wood Place. It's seventeen by twenty-two addition. Uh, my, as I recall, the reasoning here was that the owner's elderly father has to move in and, uh, can no longer, uh, traverse stairs, so it's going to be a, an addition off. If you looked at the house to the left side, seventeen by twenty-two, I guess, containing a bedroom and a, and a bathroom. If anyone has any questions on this or wants to comment, please call one of the phone numbers in front of you that you see on your screen. We'll wait for approximately sixty seconds. Ms. Sawat, is anybody on the line as of yet?
No raised hands yet.
Okay, we'll just give it a minute and then we will close the public portion. Mr. Sax, have we given it a good time? I believe we have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Okay, board members, uh, this is, uh, for C variance for the setbacks as we spoke about. Is, uh, someone, uh, in favor of moving this? Uh, I would ask them to, uh, open their mics.
I'll, I'll move it.
Was that Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Kilduff.
Ms. Kilduff, seconds, roll call, please.
Mr. Duhurst?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skodna?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. I believe there's a resolution, Mr. Sax. Yeah, there is, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is, uh, application, uh, seventy-seven dash twenty twenty Z. Uh, Kathleen Salverson, property located seven White Wood Place, uh, known as block one oh two five nine point sixteen lot two. Uh, it's an application to permit the construction of a seventeen-foot by twenty-two-foot addition in violation of side yard setback proposing fourteen point five feet, uh, where fifteen feet is required, and the total combined side yard setback proposing twenty-four point five feet where forty feet is required. Um, the only, and property is located in the R fifteen TCB zone. Uh, the only conditions of approval, uh, construction to be completed within one year of the issuance of the building permit. Secondly, the addition, the exterior of the addition will conform with the existing house. Uh, and third, uh, that the addition will be for a personal use and will not be rented out for any other residential use or commercial use. Thank you, Mr. Sax. Would you just verify the block and lot? I have something different, I think. Uh, I have, let me see, I have block one oh two five nine point sixteen lot two. That's from the resolution. Okay, I have one, uh, ten eleven is the block and lot number fifteen. Hold on, let me just double check. Was that a sixteen, I guess? So, it's kind of small in here, uh, fifteen. Yeah, it's, block is one oh two five nine point sixteen lot two. I'm looking at the tax list now. Okay, it was, it was just, it's wrong on the agenda then, in that case. Yeah. All right, board members, you've, uh, heard the, uh, resolution. Someone wanna move? I will. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Duhurst.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Duhurst?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Skodna?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Sakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Ms. Salverson, the, uh, matter has, matter has been approved, so you just have to apply for your permits, okay? You can.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, you too.
Okay. Uh, Ms., uh, Masterson, you ready?
I'm ready.
Very good. I'm gonna call it in then, in that case. This is the final matter of the evening, board, and I was watching at home. This is forty-six, there's twenty twenty Z Heritage Old Bridge, Britsmore, Old Bridge LLC. This is in the CR zone, uh, is located block six thousand lot three, one oh three oh US Route nine. It's commonly known as Gateway Shopping Center. It's, uh, for a demo portion of a existing building in construction, the thirty-nine thousand one hundred and twelve square foot building. Uh, Jennifer Phillips Smith Esquire representing the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you again. Just as a brief summary, we were last here in November, and at that time, we presented a testimony from Scott Quigley, our site engineer from Langin, who went through all of the testimony concerning the proposed, uh, renovation to this existing Gateway Shopping Center. The result is approximately about a six thousand square foot, uh, increase in the shopping center's floor area. Uh, Mr. Quigley had finished his testimony after he'd gone through all the reports by the township planner and engineer and also township traffic consultant. Um, at that time, an issue came up concerning, uh, the rear property line, which we will address momentarily. Our, uh, plan this evening is to now bring up our, our planner, Mr. Woodruff, to complete the planning testimony. But before we do, uh, we wanted to address the legal matter of the encroachment that came up towards the end of yesterday's meeting, sorry, last month's meeting. Uh, we submitted a letter to Mr. Sax and to the board dated November thirtieth that contains some of our conclusions after doing a significant amount of research. As it turns out, it looks like this, uh, encroachment probably arose with the construction of the shopping center back in the nineteen fifties uh, and was actually brought to the board's attention more than thirty years ago. Uh, at the board has set the precedent of moving ahead with approving prior plans. I think they've done so more than a dozen times since nineteen ninety-one. Provided that we give a, send a letter to JCP and L. Um, upon digging into the records here, the area behind the shopping center is a right-of-way that JCP and L has, uh, rights over. And so, back in two thousand and three, a letter was last sent to them informing them of this issue, and we proposed sending a similar letter should the board, uh, approve this application this evening. Mr. Sax, before I move on to call Mr. Woodruff, is there anything else that I should be adding concerning that issue?
No, uh, well, the, yeah, the, the, uh, just so the board is aware, I did review the letter of November thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty, uh, from council, which I believe, uh, uh, Ms. Silverman, uh, distributed to all the board members. And I appreciate, uh, the diligent research that, uh, that council did into, uh, the history of this, uh, particular encroachment. Um, and actually, I had even suggested, and Ms. Smith will probably concur with me, that I had suggested that perhaps a letter be drafted, uh, to the adjacent property owner, which Ms. Smith has done. Um, and is, I guess, willing to send this letter out. The, um, the only thing I'd like you to add, uh, Ms. Smith, perhaps, is that if you don't, I know you said you wanted a response within fifteen days. I, I would even add in here that if we don't receive a response within fifteen days, uh, we shall, we will assume that your nonresponsiveness or silence, uh, is, is some type of an acknowledgement of the existence of this encroachment, and that you have no objection to the continuation of it. Um, first of all, I think that protects you, and I think it also protects the municipality. And, uh, based on that, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would have no objection with, uh, with this matter at least being resolved from a legal standpoint in terms of going forward with an approval. Uh, Ms. Smith is correct. Apparently, this issue always comes up, uh, at, uh, for every application involving the shopping center. Um, and it does appear that it's been there since nineteen fifty-seven, and I doubt it's ever gonna get resolved. Uh, it, it, it's just not a significant enough of an issue for, uh, the adjacent property owner to probably deal with it. Uh, and knowing that it's, uh, a public utility, uh, it, it's probably next to impossible to get some type of response from them. But, uh, I do appreciate the effort that Ms. Smith went to. It was something that, uh, the, the chairman had actually suggested and, and I suggested as well. And, uh, I think we can, we could probably move forward, uh, at this particular point in time, Mr. Chairman. Well, I have two questions. Uh, one, who's the actual owner versus the, JCP has an easement, correct? But they don't own that one.
They previously owned it, but JCP and L has, uh, retained their right-of-way over it, and they are the ones that have a say over what structures can actually be on the property.
Um, I'm aware of that, but who's the actual, who holds title to the land?
I think it's called Nine Plaza LLC.
That's not, that's not the Wolf, Wolf Organization? Uh, it, it probably is. It probably is, Mr. Chairman. It's probably one of their, uh, one of their holding companies. Okay, uh, well, my own personal commentary is that just because something kept happening in the past, it shouldn't be corrected moving forward. Uh, I wasn't on the board in two thousand and three, but I was in two thousand and six, and I know, no, we've never done this since then, so I can't speak of what other people did in the past. Uh, I appreciate all the work you put in, Ms. Smith, and I read your letter as well to Mr. Sax, and I read the draft. And you, you dated them both November thirtieth. I just don't understand why you didn't fix them, post which you sent it, and that we wouldn't have this, have, be having this conversation right now.
I, I had spoken to Mr. Sax about that, and we wanted to make sure that it was an action that the board agreed with before we sent it.
Well, not only is it what we agreed with, it's what we said, what we said and what you indicated, your exact words were, "I'll speak to my client and explore our options." That's what's in the transcript. But I thought from the, I read the transcript three times, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, on seven different pages on six occasions, we spoke about this, and I thought it was quite clear that we were gonna try and make an attempt to do this, and I just don't understand why we haven't. What I really didn't like was the comment that in the, in the letter to Mr. Sax is, "If you're granted approval, you'll do this."
Right, so what we wanted to make sure we did is.
What does that have to do with whether you got approval or not? You're still recruiting on somebody else's land.
So as far as whether it's a condition of approval or not, what we needed to do following the hearing last time was to go back and do our homework. You know, our, my client only acquired this property relatively recently in the lifespan of, of the property. So we went back and dug into the history of the property, when we thought this encroachment might have happened, uh, whether it had been before the board before or not, and needed to dig into those issues, which, which we did. And that resulted in writing the letter with our conclusions about when we think the encroachment happened and what had, uh, been the board's precedent over time. You know, the fact is that if JCP and L doesn't respond, you know, our only other action would be to go to court. And I don't know that that's an action that we want to, um, voice upon JCP and L either. So, this is an operating shopping center. Um, it has been operating since, since the nineteen fifties. Right now, there is a large vacant, uh, section of the shopping center that, you know, if we had to go to court to do an adverse possession action, would take years to go through and do, leaving that section vacant, uh, to the detriment of everyone, to the town, the other small businesses in that shopping center. So, we went through, we did our due diligence, looked back into how long we thought this might have been there. It's, we know now it's been decades. We know it's come before the board, uh, board's attention before, and that the remedy the board crafted was that we had to send a letter to JCP and L. And we spoke to Mr. Sax about it this week, uh, or it was last week, and then sent the letter confirming on, on Monday, and that's what I thought the board's direction was, that we would send the letter after this evening if that's what the board wanted us to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in for a second. I mean, I, I, I don't think, I don't think the township, and I don't think anybody wants to see an action filed for adverse possession, uh, 'cause that's somewhat of a draconian measure. Basically, it would, it would essentially be co-opting property, uh, that is not owned by this applicant, uh, to the detriment of another property owner. Um, unfortunately, in a, in a dense, densely populated state like New Jersey, the, the, these encroachments are common. Uh, you know, the only time they ever seem to get resolved is, uh, you know, when there's some economic impact, which I'm, I'm, I'm not sure there's any economic detriment to JCP and L by the continued use of this area. Um, and it would have to be either a quiet title action or an adverse possession action. Uh, but, Mr. Chairman, I do agree. I don't think we need to make this a condition of approval. I think as long as this is stated on the record, and I can ref, and if in fact this application is approved, you know, I can reference the representations, uh, that correspondence was sent, uh, to JCP and L by the applicant's counsel, and I think that would suffice. And I thought that's, Mr. Sax, I thought that's all we were asking for. Yeah. We was looking for adverse, adverse possession. We were merely looking to have them notified, and if they don't respond, well, shame on them. Uh, and I don't think they will respond. Free letter, but, but I thought that was what we were gonna come forward with, and I don't understand why a letter was written, drafted, but not sent. That's my. Well, that, that, I may, I may take the blame on that one then, Mr. Chairman, because, uh, I, I wanted to see the letter first. Um, you know, but certainly the letter can be sent out, uh, tomorrow, all right? Uh, and in fact, if this board does take favorable action, uh, it would be out before the resolution would be adopted. Uh, so I don't see any, any issue, quite frankly. I always seek your guidance, Mr. Sax, and I, and I welcome your commentary, and I agree with you. Okay, thank you. You can proceed, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. At the conclusion of the last meeting, we, Mr. Quigley had completed his testimony. We do have one additional witness, and that's Greg Woodruff, our planner. But before I bring him up, is it the board's practice to have questioning, public questioning of Mr. Quigley now or after Mr. Woodruff testifies?
At the, at the very end, uh, the public portion would be after all your test, uh, your witnesses test.
Perfect, and I'll go ahead and ask, uh, Mr. Woodruff if he could step forward virtually and be sworn in.
I, I believe I unmuted, but let me know if you can't hear me.
Mr. Woodruff, I can hear you. Please, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self, you got?
I do.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name, and professional affiliation for the record.
Certainly, thank you. Uh, my name's Gregory Woodruff. Last name is spelled W-O-O-D-R-U-F-F. Uh, I'm an associate at Langin Engineering and Environmental Services. I'm an associate at Langen Engineering and Environmental Services.
Okay, thank you.
You're testifying as a professional planner, sir?
I am.
Just put your credentials on the record for those watching at home.
Certainly. So I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as nationally, with the American Institute of Certified Planners. My license is current. As mentioned, I'm an associate at our firm. I have appeared before numerous similar zoning and planning boards throughout the state of New Jersey and many, many municipalities as an expert in planning. I'm not sure.
Thank you, Mr. Woodruff. We, we respect and we accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Woodruff, how did you plan for your testimony this evening? Did you review all of the materials that were submitted to the board?
Yes, as with any application like this, reviewed all of the application materials, drawings, reports, as well as relevant sections of the land use ordinances, land use ordinance and the master planning, background master planning documents, as well as visited the site and the surrounding area.
Excellent. Now, since it's been a little while since the last testimony, if you could walk the board just very generally through the shopping center and the surrounding uses for context. And before you do, if I could ask Ms. Swans, if you could put the aerial that was on the screen back, back up, which is the area submitted with the exhibits for, for the board. Perfect.
So as the aerials coming up, just some quick reminders and, you know, I, I promise not to belabor too many or, or repeat too much of the information about the existing site. Try to keep it to, to relevant information. Again, the site, over a 20 acre site in the CR zone. It's generally a triangular shaped site, as you see here, bounded by Route 9, Ernston Road with its road frontages. There, it's a roughly 250,000 square foot existing shopping center with two principal buildings, the large sort of angular shaped building and then the additional parcel there. There are 1,130 parking spaces existing on the site relative to the surrounding land uses, working my sort of, my way sort of clockwise around the property to the north, which in, on this exhibit, which is the aerial exhibit labeled EX dash A. To the north, which is page right on this exhibit, is commercial uses, including the landscape supply business and an auto zone. Ernston Road on the north, north east portion of the part, property, Route 9, sort of due east to the property. In the south, you see commercial, commercial properties, including in the distance, the Home Depot property. And to the west, you have what, what we just described, discussed, the JC, or yeah, have the, excuse me, the St. Bernadette's Church and the residential, single family residential neighborhood further west. So that's some of the surrounding land uses, sort of providing some context relative to the existing shopping center, which, as has been mentioned, has been there since roughly the 50s.
Right. And Ms. Swan, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the fifth page of the site plan package that's on the website. And as you do that, Mr. Woodruff, if you would remind the board again of what the proposed improvements include.
Sure. And again, I'll, I'll try to keep it to sort of what I think is, is relevant as it pertains to the, the variances that we're requesting, which I'll be talking about the justifications for. So the project includes the removal of approximately 32, 33,000 square feet of retail space. You see it here pictured and I apologize, the drawing number is under the window with everyone's image. I don't know if you'd like me to state what drawing we're looking at. It was, it's page five of the packet. I believe it's CS 100, the drawing CS, CS 100, I apologize. So as you see on the right side of that page, which is the northern portion of the property, is the proposed roughly 39,000 square foot building, as well as some related site improvements around that building. So again, demolish roughly 32, 33,000 square feet of building and construct roughly 39,000 square feet of building. In addition, there'll be 17 parking spaces that are added to be proposed. Now, relative to the parking spaces, if, if the board recalls Mr. Quigley's testimony at the last hearing, the parking spaces, we're requesting to, or the applicant is requesting to construct as, as few as 17 additional spaces. The actual drawings included a larger number of parking spaces that would be constructed. But there were some comments provided that may, may mean that certain areas have to be enlarged and therefore parking spaces would have to be removed from the design. So we're requesting a variance for as few as 1,147 parking spaces to overall be on the site, which would be 17 more than currently in order to provide some flexibility to work out those specific site design measures that have been requested by the board's professionals. And, and that's, that's the sort of synopsis, I think, the relevant synopsis of the improvements proposed. And as it relates to the, to the variances.
Mr. Woodruff, can you summarize the relief that is requested? And also, as you go through the zoning chart, some of the existing non conformities on the site that will remain the same as a result of this application?
Sure. So I'd like to just list sort of the existing non conformities first and then I'll list separately the relief that's being requested from those existing non conformities that are being impacted or, or exacerbated. So there's an exist, existing non conformity, excuse me, relative to minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard, both an individual measurement and the combined measurement, a minimum rear yard, the maximum floor area ratio, the landscape area ratio, the buffer area along Route 9 and the building and parking within a buffer area. And, and we also mentioned the parking spaces. Now, relative to the variances or the, the relief that's being requested, from a, from a bulk perspective, that relief really focuses on the, the side yard conditions, as well as the landscape area ratio and the number of parking spaces, as well as that FAR change, which in this case rises to the level of a D4 variance. But that is one of the other existing can changes, the existing conditions that is changing. Excuse me.
Okay. I guess, starting then with the FAR variance, if you could detail that variance and then move into some of the C variances.
Certainly. So relative to the FAR, the D4 variance that's being requested, as, as the board is aware, the proof justification from a planning perspective for an FAR variance really is, is guided by the case law relative to the Randolph Town Center case. In, and really what that case indicates is that the, because the use is permitted, there's not, the, the burden on me or the burden on the planning justification is reduced relative to the positive criteria because the use i- i- is permitted and is particularly suited to the property. It's really just addressing the negative criteria relative to impacts associated with that additional FAR. So in this case, you know, again, while that positive criteria burden is reduced, I, I'd like to address some of the positive criteria that I do think this request meets. First, relative to the overall municipal land use law, as, as the board is well aware, there are specific principles that the, or purposes that the municipal land use law outlines. In my opinion, there are two that I believe this application furthers. The first would be purpose A, which is to encourage action to guide appropriate use or development of all lands in the state to promote public health, safety and, and general welfare. And in, in, in my opinion, the improvements are at an existing shopping center. The, the improvements will reinvigorate the shopping center. It has been in existence since the 50s. The space that is proposed for demolition and redevelopment is currently a vacant space. And, and I think we all understand the challenges that bricks and mortar retail spaces are facing in, in sort of the larger macroeconomic climate that we're all facing. So I do believe that purpose will be furthered. Second is purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses according to respective environmental requirements to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And again, this is a, a new, modern shopping space that will be redeveloped in an existing shopping center, which, you know, hopefully will re-energize and reinvigorate the overall shopping center. In addition, just lastly, I, I think it's worth also looking a little closer and the township's own planning documents. So the master plan documents for the, the town itself, which have a specific goal to quote unquote, consider community sustainability, excuse me, including jobs, the housing ratio and goods and service needs. And obviously, this being in his existing shopping center that would be redeveloped and reinvigorated, I believe, addresses specifically that goal within the, the more local township planning documents. Relative to the negative criteria, in my opinion, the requested FAR deviation is extremely de minimis, de minimis. It, it results in a point zero one increase in the FAR from the existing condition to the proposed condition. The existing FAR for the shopping center is 0.25. It increases to 0.26, which again is a mathematical increase. But in my opinion, from a planning perspective, is a, a very de minimis increase over a, a large shopping center. So that, you know, in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. The additional floor area does not increase the intensity within the overall shopping center to where I believe it will impact perceive, perceive, from a perception perspective, parking issues, traffic issues. And, you know, when you look at the relevant ratios of parking provided, the applicant is again proposing as, as many or as 17 new parking spaces with maybe a couple additional if, if the design is able to accommodate them. So the ratios that will result are well in line with the ratios for typical commercial facilities like this. In addition to, for discussing issues relative to the public good, while the applicant is making the building bigger, they were able to improve some of the setback conditions. And we'll talk a little bit more about those when I talk about the setback variances that are being requested. So while the building got bigger, they were able to actually improve some of the setback conditions that existed previously, which again is just a positive condition. In addition, I don't believe there's any substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. The use is permitted. It's an extremely de minimis increase in the FAR. And we talked about the specific goal of the master plan documents that I believe the request furthers. So with that, I, I'd like to talk about the bulk variances, if, if you're okay with that.
Sure. If you first identify, as you go through, identify each variance that's required, please.
Certainly. So relative to the, to the bulk variances that we'll be talking about, just some of the terminology that I'll be using as the board is well aware, C or bulk variances fall into two general carriers, C criteria or categories, excuse me, C1 variances. Generally, the justification from a planning perspective is that there's, again, speaking in somewhat layman's terms, but there's some unique characteristic of the site that would prevent compliance with whatever that requirement might be. And or C2 criteria whereby there's a balancing test between the benefits that might be achieved versus any detriments or perceived detriments. So that's how I'll be talking about each of these bulk variances. So the first that I'd like to talk about is the minimum side yard or minimum side yards, whereby the minimum for an individual is 100 feet or the combined is 250. The existing are 21.8 feet and 87.1 for the combined. We are proposing that those side yard setbacks are 24.1 feet for the individual and 89.4 feet for the combined. Both of those, as I mentioned before, improve the existing condition. I, I know it's only a matter of a few feet, but again, when you have a, a shopping center on a site like this that is sort of at its capacity or, you know, is, is fully developed currently, being able to increase the size of the building while improving those side yard setbacks, I think is, is definitely a benefit. So you, you get an increase of about 2.3 feet to the rear drive behind the new store, which will help with the circulation back there for two-way traffic flow. And conformance with these setbacks just really wouldn't be possible without removing the entire building. Obviously, again, it's an, it's an existing building that's been here since the 50s. And so while there is a portion of it that will be new, there are many attributes to the building that are just, you have to work within and around. So from my perspective, this request meets the C2 criteria where the benefits of increasing those setbacks outweigh any, any, what would really have to be perceived detriments, because I, I don't believe there are any. The second would be the minimum landscaped area ratio. This is again, an existing non conformity. In this case, we are improving it. As you can see on the plan that's on the screen, the parking area that is in front of the proposed rebuilt or redesigned building will be reconfigured slightly. And it's out in that parking area that these landscaped areas are, are being reconfigured as well. So the ratio here improves, I believe it's from point 108 to point 109, if I'm not mistaken. But the, the ratio improves, but it still does not comply. So again, it, the overall parking area is being reconfigured as part of this, is being minimally reconfigured as part of the proposed building. And, and the ratio is improving and we, our professionals, our, our design engineers are working with the board's professionals to to sort of right-size how this reconfiguration takes place. So the, the benefit of that ratio increasing minimally, while still focusing on the overall functionality of this existing shopping center, in my opinion, outweighs the detriment that might be caused by having to comply, which would probably only just remove, remove or reduce a significant number of parking spaces with, which would exacerbate the other variance that we're requesting, which is an, an existing non conformity for number of parking spaces proposed. Which leads me into that next justification, which would be for that minimum number of parking spaces. The, as I mentioned at the beginning of my testimony, there are 1,130 parking spaces. We are proposing 1,147. But again, as I mentioned, the applicant, as part of the discussion and work with the board's professionals to work on some turning radii and, and other issues that have come up relative to that parking area layout, may be able to have more than 1,147, but is just requesting that number as the variance amount in case that's what ends up having to be the number as part of the, that, that more detailed design process. So as I mentioned before, relative to the parking, with the additional number of parking spaces, it results in parking ratios around four and a half, which is a very common ratio for retail spaces and retail centers like this. And, and I believe there's definite benefits to the additional parking spaces and the overall ratios that will be achieved relative to the detriment of not technically providing that, that differential in, in the number of parking spaces to what would be required. Lastly, relative to the, the last bulk variance relates to the refuse area screening. A six-foot high fence and landscaping would technically be required. You can see the refuse area in the rear of the building, which would be sort of plan upper right on the, the plan that's on the screen. And you can see that there's, there's no fence or screening proposed, but in that area, you are, the, the rear of the building, currently, there's no screening for the refuse area that's back there for the existing building. And this portion of the site faces the, the landscape supply yard and, and uses that really wouldn't see it anyway. So the screening would really be of, of little use. So in my opinion, this, this request also meets the C2 criteria whereby the benefits outweigh any detriments because adding that screening or the fence would just add additional structures in that sort of already tight back area, while really not achieving much benefit for, for the adjacent properties because of their uses. And so in that case, in my opinion, there would, would be much, very little functional use for those, the fence and, and the screening in this case, in this specific location. Relative to all of these requests, all of the bulk, all four bulk variances, I would cite the same two purposes of the municipal land use law relative to the positive criteria, as well as the goal of the master plan, that overall, all of these requests from a positive perspective fit to, within those justifications, that they all go to further the overall reinvigoration, hopefully reenergizing of the shopping center relative to the, the overall positive criteria. relative to the overall positive criteria that they satisfy. Relative to the negative criteria, in my opinion, obviously, as we've talked about, the benefits outweigh the detriments. There's no substantial detriment to the public good. We talked about the improvement for the side yard setbacks. We've also mentioned that there's an increase, or I've mentioned that there's an increase in the landscape ratio for an existing shopping center with an existing substantial parking field. You know, no small feat. And there's also no substantial detriment to the zoning ordinance or the zone plan. It is, as we mentioned, a permitted use in existing shopping center. And these minimal deviations are really driven as much by anything, the fact that you're trying to work these improvements into that existing space and that existing shopping center. There's also a couple waivers that I'd like to just quickly mention, just to put some testimony on the record. There are four. The first is the landscaping of the parking lot area whereby 20% would be required. The percentage on the plans works out to actually 12.55%. Again, as we've mentioned, the existing parking lot, or the parking lot is existing. And so trying to work in additional landscape areas would just reduce the number of parking spaces, which is another issue for the overall shopping center. And obviously, there has to be balancing there. So just the physical difficulty relative to achieving both of those and balancing both of those is what really prevents compliance with that design requirement. The second being the parking stall size. 10 by 20 parking space size is required. There's actually some variation across the site. Some stalls are nine by 18, others are 10 by 18. So in the reconfiguration, basically, that pattern that exists out there was matched. So it just results in some spaces that aren't technically the right size, but they match the pattern that is out there and don't result in an inefficient traffic pattern at all. So again, it's really just the physical difficulty of having existing space sizing and layout out there and matching that without having to sort of reconfigure and redo the entire parking lot. Third is a curb return radii, whereby the design requirements require a minimum of five feet for the curb return radii. In some cases, that curb return radii is smaller, as I mentioned. It's an existing parking field, right? And some of those radii are established or sort of dictated by those existing conditions. As I also mentioned, our design, our design engineers are working with the board's professionals to try to address these conditions wherever possible. And lastly, the actual location of parking islands. The requirement is that they be located at both ends of each parking row and intermediate islands be located within a parking row where there's more than 20 spaces. Some parking rows don't have that intermediate condition. Again, it's an existing parking field with some of that existing condition, and trying to meet that would really just reduce the number of parking spaces that are provided. So again, just the physical challenge there of balancing number of parking spaces with the technical requirement of that design requirement. So that's sort of a summary of the physical challenges there of the design waivers. And with that, Mr. Chairman, just in wrapping up, I would say, in conclusion, I think all of the variances, the D4 variance, the bulk variances, and the design waivers do meet the approved standard from a planning perspective and could be granted by the board, should they so desire.
Thank you, Mr. Woodruff. That is all I had for Mr. Woodruff this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Sawant?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Woodruff, can you please go back and list the side yard and the combined side yard variance? Because I seem to have different numbers and I can offer explanation, but I just want to confirm the numbers you have.
Certainly. And I may, I believe Mr. Quigley is on as well, so we can triple-check with him. I believe the numbers that I have are we're, sorry, maybe just to ask this question, you're asking me to clarify what we're proposing? I assume not what's
Yes. So what is the side yard setback you said it was?
Sure. So I believe the individual side yard setback that we are proposing is 24.1 feet for the individual, and then a combined at 89.4 feet.
Okay, that's where the discrepancy is, and I want to just explain and clarify.
You've muted, Ms. Sawant.
Based on our township code, when there is a corner property or you have multiple frontages, the way setbacks are calculated or the way they're looked at is the side that is opposite, the shortest right-of-way. So in this case, Ernston Road and that corner, the side that is opposite becomes the rear yard. So when, where you call it as your side yard, I'm going to point it on the cursor.
Yep, I got you.
I can't hear.
This side here is the rear yard. The side here and here, that's the side yard, and all the other sides are front yards. So the numbers I have is minimum side yard is 9.8 feet, and the combined side yard is 32.11 feet. It's not changed with the proposed development, but I just want to have the correct numbers on record and in the resolution. So it doesn't change anything. It is existing non-conformity, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Thank you. And I think that the difference there, maybe, I think I was probably talking about relative to maybe the proximity of the site immediately adjacent to the proposed building, not necessarily like the narrowest area on the site anywhere, right?
Right. And I think that's a common mistake that is done. I've seen it numerous times when it's a corner lot. It's very challenging. When I saw it for the first time, even, I was a little surprised because I've never seen that regulation. But yes, that's what we follow. And that's pretty, I don't have any further questions. I just want to add that in this current climate, when we have so many vacant stores within shopping centers, grocery store this scale and size is actually welcoming. It's exciting. So good luck.
Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro? Anything for the witness?
Mr. Chairman, I
We lost your
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead now. I can hear you.
I have nothing for this witness. Thank you.
Okay, who else we have? Ms. Drum, do you have anything for the planner?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Fire marshal, you don't have anything for the planner, do you?
Oh, James, thanks.
Okay, and I hope I didn't miss anybody. I'm gonna go to the board. Board members from my left to right, as always. Mr. Scotten?
Yes, one question, Mr. Woodruff. Does this have a lower level in the site? In other words, a downstairs?
That's a good question. I am not aware of one. I am gonna defer, just to make sure that there's something that I'm not aware of, but I don't
I believe there are a couple of shopping stores there that have stairs that go down to a lower level. I don't know whether you have that. And is the demolishing, does that take into account of the lower part of that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Your question was about the lower levels of the existing shopping center. I'm sorry, I thought
You're gonna demolish.
Right, so yeah, go ahead, Jen, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah. If you're talking about the existing shopping center, you know, the existing features of the existing shopping center would be demolished and would be taken into account. It's my understanding, again, I'm the planner, but it's my understanding that's all being factored into the overall redevelopment of the site. The existing building in the area where the new building is proposed will be properly demolished, prepared for redevelopment, and then the new building built, per the plans as submitted.
So it's your belief that this is on a slab type of construction? That you're gonna demolish from a slab? And you're not sure if there is a lower level?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to apologize and say I'm getting out of my wheelhouse relative to, you know, some of those specifics relative to what the actual physical slab conditions or building typology is. But again, it just from all the meetings that I've been part of, all the existing portions of the building as depicted will be demolished properly. And, you know, the proposed building will be built, I guess, is the best I can answer you with, and I apologize if that's frustrating.
Yeah, that doesn't answer that.
Maybe we could get Mr. Quigley.
Well, Mike, just to follow up, is there a particular concern about the basement, if there is one?
Well, demolishing and then you have a lower level of that area. Who knows what could happen once you get down there?
In what sense, Mr. Scotten?
Excuse me, sir?
I'm sorry, in what sense, what could happen down there?
Demolishing part, whether plumbing, sewage, things like that, once you get low, when you have to get down to the lower end.
Well, they're gonna have to come up with a construction plan that's gonna obviously take into account any existing conditions that, if there is in fact a subterranean basement in that structure. Perhaps Mr. Quigley can answer that question. I don't know if he's, I see him now, so.
Yes. Do I need to be sworn in again or anything?
No, you're still under oath, Mr. Quigley.
Okay. There is no basement level to the area here. Under marshals, there is a basement area, but under the portion that we're demolishing is just a slab.
Okay, thank you. That answers that.
Great.
Anything else, Mr. Scotten? Nope, okay. Ms. Kilduff, anything?
No.
Mr. Connor?
No questions.
Mr. DuHurst?
No questions.
Vice Chairman Walker?
No questions.
Mr. Stoner?
No questions.
And Mr. Cycaski?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Sax, anything for the planner, sir?
No, I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing either, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. That is the end of our presentation. We believe we've addressed all the questions that were asked by the board members, and so that would be the end for us, subject to if there's anything that comes out of the public comments or questions that we need to address.
Okay, very good. And before I do that, I'll just ask our professionals. Ms. Sawant, Ms. Shapiro, Ms. Drum. I'll do it individually. Are you satisfied with the plans put forward? Everything's been to your satisfaction, Ms. Sawant? Or will be? Yes? You're muted, I think, no?
Yes.
Okay, everything's okay? Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, Chairman, I'm satisfied.
Your satisfaction, okay. Ms. Drum?
Yes, did.
Okay, Ms. Smith, then I will, I will open up a public portion at this time, okay?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I asked Mr. Hart as well. I see him on there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Tom. I missed you.
Last month, some of the hearing testimony went in, but can we go over my memo and what they're going to do because some of the conversations I had prior to even the hearing with engineers from different states promising me hydrants, promising me fire department connections. I haven't heard anything about it yet. Nothing on this site plan showing it. It is a big problem in the rear of that building where they wanted to put it. I didn't want it near the loading dock. So if somebody can at least say to me where we're gonna put the fire department connection and the other hydrant that has to be installed.
You're referencing your October 13th memo, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Smith.
Or I think Mr. Quigley, probably rather than Mr. Woodruff, would be the appropriate person. So, Mr. Quigley, I know that we reviewed this memo previously, and I believe the testimony was that we would comply with whatever the fire marshal needed, but if you could maybe expand upon that.
Yeah, we had spoken about this briefly earlier, and I think it was kind of mentioned by everyone that this approval is just of the site plan has not we're gonna continue to work on the site plan with Mr. Hart and the other professionals, so we're gonna be resubmitting to address his memo from October 13th before construction permits are issued or anything like that. So we're gonna be continuing to work with you, Mr. Hart.
And Mr. Hart?
Larry, this is what happens. We have an uncomplete plan that we're trying to agree to. And we're gonna work on it later.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Tom. Yeah.
If I could ask
Obviously, let me just finish. This is not a bifurcated application, so you're seeking preliminary and final approval this evening. I mean, you know, the only thing I can suggest, Ms. Smith, is that you know, whatever, whatever recommendations Mr. Hart has are gonna have to be complied with. So, Tom, I mean, you know, if you're if you're comfortable dictating where the fire hydrant's gonna go and where the fire department connection is gonna go, that's where it's gonna have to go. And they're gonna have to comply with that. So you wanna weigh in on that?
No, I mean, if that's how we're gonna work on it, I have no problem with that. As long as the rest of the professionals, Nicole and Vina, everybody else is on the same page. I'm not really worried about code enforcement at this point, because we'll be on the same page with them.
Right.
Or everybody that's at this hearing now, you know, they always have more meetings than I have, so.
Right.
I have no problem with what you just said, so we'll work with it that way. And I'm sure we can work it out.
Yes, our intent is to comply with your letter, to be clear. That is the intent, but you know, we will be resubmitting for your review.
Okay.
Mr. Quigley, I think the problem, the problem essentially from reading Mr. Hart's memo is that it doesn't show where the potential hydrant would be, and it doesn't show where the fire department connection would be. But as long as the applicant is going to abide by whatever recommendations Mr. Hart has as to location, then, you know, just if that's acceptable to the applicant, then that's what we'll add into the resolution if it's voted favorably.
Agreed, yes.
All right.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
That's agreeable.
Yes.
And Fire Marshal, you okay with that, Tom?
Thank you.
Okay, and particularly, you're talking about, I think, the fourth paragraph? Were you saying, requesting if the plan is approved, that meetings be held with my office and code enforcement?
With that fourth paragraph, but the first paragraph is the main problem.
Right.
I'm not worried about, we already have the the workout on the on the demoing how we're gonna maintain protection for the rest of the building. That's already laid out and just waiting for the approvals.
Okay.
Where they'll, before they can get a demo permit, there'll be meetings on how they're going to do that. The landlord is going to do those changes.
And that was a point brought up by Mr. Walker, I believe, in the November, at the November hearing.
They're gonna maintain the fire protection for the canopy that's gonna have a big hole in it because the whole piece is missing. So we'll work with that part. I just wanted to put it on record that I couldn't remember how far we went in November, so. And I'm good now, Jim. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fire Marshal. And Mr. Sax, you're good with that as well, right?
Yes, I am.
I think the exchange between yourself and the applicant's attorney, I think, and Mr. Quigley, I guess, has put this to rest for now.
Yes.
Now, having said that, is anybody else want anything else before I go to the public portion on this? Just raise your hand in front of me so I can see. All right, I see none, so I'm gonna move forward, Ms. Smith, okay?
Yes.
This is 462020Z. It's Heritage Old Bridge, Brixmore Old Bridge LLC. It's commonly known as Gateway Shopping Center. The location would be the intersection of Ernston Road and US 9, in fact, is 1030 US Route 9. They are looking to, for a preliminary and final site plan. They plan on demolishing a store that's there now and empty, and apparently a tenant wants to come in and put a, I guess, a large-scale grocery store in there. So it would certainly be beneficial for, to have more more people in the shopping center rather than less, so we're hoping that that can take part. If you want to call in, the numbers are in front of you on your screen right now, if you're watching. Please call any number, and you will get a chance to ask your question or make your comments. Ms. Sawant, is anyone on the line at present?
No one, yes.
Okay, we will give it a full minute then, please. Once again, folks, if you're listening and you have a question about this, it's at the Gateway Shopping Center, please call in now. Mr. Sax?
Mr. Chairman, I think we probably can close the public portion. Mr. Chairman, I think we probably can close the public portion.
Okay, public portion is hereby closed for the, for the evening. Final commentary before, I would assume you're going to be asking for a vote. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I, I would definitely like to ask for a vote. I appreciate the board's time on this, particularly at the last meeting that went so late into the evening. And we hope that we've answered all of your questions and look forward to a vote. Just as a point of order, and I might be reading my notes incorrectly, but I believe maybe Mr. Connor wasn't present at the last meeting. If we could just double check.
He read the transcript. He responded to me.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Any other final comments from the Ms. Smith for the applicant?
No, that is it. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, it was a great presentation. I, I thank all your professionals and yourself for the diligence that you, that you put forward to, in front of the board. I guess, Mr. Sacks, the only thing we have left to do is instruction. And of course, that's going to be prefaced by a D4 vote, correct?
That, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And should that pass, then we will move on to the bulk variances. So board members, we have a D4 for floor area ratio. It is small or de minimis as referenced from 0.25 to 0.26. I think at this point, if someone would like to move that, we would entertain that motion. Who would be in favor or opposed?
I'll move it. Dewhurst.
All right, Mr. Dewhurst is in favor of the FAR variants.
Second, Stoner.
I think Ms. Kilduff. Yeah. Roll call please on the FAR, D4.
Wait, who's second?
Kilduff.
Thank you. Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And the Cs, there's four of them. There's minimum side yard. Ms. Sawan just spoke about that and put the actual numbers on the record. There's minimum landscape area ratio. 0.108 to 109, it's increasing, correct? And minimum number of parking stalls, we're at, we're going to be, it's presently at 1130, which is pre-existing nonconforming. They're indicating they're going to go to 1147. I hope I didn't misspoke, misspeak on that one. And finally, this, the last C would be for the variance for the lack of trash enclosure and screening. Mr. Sacks, we can take them all in one, can we not?
Yes. Yes, we can.
You'll be voting on all four board members, all four for the minimum, for those C variances. Someone in favor moving?
I'll move it.
Mr. Psychowski was there? Okay. Who's, who's the second?
Second, Kilduff.
Second, Kilduff.
Beach again, man.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And then we have four design waivers. I guess these are pre-existing nonconforming issues. Parking lot landscaping, parking stall length going from 20, where 20 is required, 18 is existing. Curb AI of five feet and intermediate landscape islands within rows of parking. Did I get that right, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. There's the, the four design waivers. Someone like to move them?
I'll move it.
Mr. Stoner, very good. Mr. Stoner as an alternate, I think we have a full board tonight, so
Oh, okay.
You can move them.
Okay.
I'll move them.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You can't second either.
Can't second either?
No.
Sorry, you're right.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Okay.
Roll call, please. Who, who seconded? Mrs. Scott? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And then preliminary site plan. I'll move it.
Second, Dewhurst.
Roll call please.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And before I call final site plan, is my understanding, the letter's going to be sent on this matter to JCPenney.
That's correct.
Ms. Smith will send it out tomorrow.
Thank you. And as the final site plan, if someone want to move it? It will be me. It's going to be me again. Who else? I think
Who's second?
Scott?
Roll call please.
Mr. Dewhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Kilduff?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Psychowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, it is getting difficult to do this without being the same with each other. Ms. Smith, thank you and your professionals. We look forward to that space being occupied. It definitely needs it. You sound like you have a good plan. Once again, thank you all and a healthy, happy new year to you, man.
Thank you. And thank you to all the board members as well.
Good night now. Ms. Silverman, anything to bring before the board?
Yes, I wanted to talk to Larry. Larry, do you have something to tell us about either Metro Storage or Old Bridge Rifle?
Metro Storage, I think since the last hearing, I did have a case management conference with Judge McCluskey, who's now handling all the prerogative writs in Middlesex County. He did issue a scheduling order. I don't believe a trial date will occur until probably the early spring of next year. So I, I will keep the board posted on that. Unfortunately, as you know, justice moves at a snail's pace and during the pandemic, it's even slower than that. So there's, there's some, some, some delay in terms of moving things, but you know, we should have a, a trial on this sometime in the spring. The, the Old Bridge Rifle, I don't, we have not had a case management conference yet on that. I did file my answer, and I suspect that there'll be a case management conference with Judge McCluskey, probably scheduled during the month of December on that, and certainly a trial in the spring on that as well.
Anything else, Mr. Sacks?
No, that, that would be it, Mr. Chairman.
Any, any of the board members, raise your hand? Nobody? Kim, anything else?
December 17th is our last meeting of the year.
Okay. And it is a, we're going to be be Zoom, right?
Yes.
What's on right now? Anything?
We have three Cs.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, thank everybody for being here tonight. Everybody be safe. Let's make sure we all can be here in a couple of weeks.
Can somebody want to move?
Someone move for adjournment, please?
No, Jim.
All in favor?
All right. All right.
We stand adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.